Good evening, welcome to the January 8th meeting of the Martin County Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cardwell?
Let's pray. Dear Father, we're here tonight with grateful hearts that we're all safe and well. We thank you, Lord, for us having a wonderful first semester as we are soon closing it, Lord. We thank you for our county's schools' leadership team, our superintendent, all the teachers and staff that have worked hard, Lord, with you helping them for us to have a wonderful school year. Please be with us during the coming year and we pray that we will continue to flourish. Please be with the board tonight that we can hear and learn everything that's going on in our county and make wise decisions. Lord, thank you for our village coming together in many ways to help our public schools. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Alrighty, we need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Who wants to approve the agenda?
Alright, have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. And we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Ms. Stahl's recognitions.
Good evening. I love this part of my job, getting to brag to my folks. This year we do something a little bit different with the superintendent's Christmas card. We open it up to get more student artists the opportunity to be a part of it. And tonight we would like to recognize our winners. This opened up this year to students in all grade levels, which was pretty exciting. So we'd like to call, starting out with our first place winner, Ms. Jamisha Haywood, eighth grader from Riverside Middle School. And if you call the students up, you can see their artwork on the big screen. And Ms. Jamisha, we need you to stand up there and get a picture. Go ahead, sit right here. Thank you. Our second place winner is Ms. Cassidy Farver from Rogers Elementary School. Get a picture real quick, I'll start. Thank you, congratulations Cassidy. And our third place winner is Ms. Adeline Sexton, who is in second grade at South Creek Elementary School. Great job, Ms. Adeline. Thank you very much. Now, we also want to recognize, and we had some tremendous entries, and we want to recognize our honorable mention winners. When they come up, if they'll line up right here, we'll get a group picture all together. First up is Ms. Abigail Ruiz Diaz, first grade from Janesville. Next up is Mr. Sammy McDaniel, third grade from E.J. Hayes. Our next honorable mention winner is Ms. Mallory Spruill, fourth grade from Rogers. And we have another in the Diaz family, Ms. Dawn Ruiz Diaz, fifth grade from Janesville. Our talent is there. Stay in with Janesville, we have another honorable mention winner, Ms. Adeline Reinhardt. And next up, Mr. Tyron McNair from Riverside Middle School. I don't believe he could be with us tonight. Tyron is sixth grade. And we'd like now invite Mr. Tajae Barnes, sixth grade, South Creek Middle School. And closing out with our high school honorable mention winners, Ms. Robyn Cowan for the Martin Innovative Early College. And Ms. Jacqueline Dance, South Creek High School, she's a senior. I don't believe Jacqueline could be with us. So. Great. Alright, let's give them all one more round. And their original artwork are in folders on the back table here, if you'd like to take that.
I always enjoy the Christmas art contest, thank you for your entries. Very, very nice artwork. Alrighty, the next item is the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you so much Chairman Heath. Good evening, everyone. We have had a busy month in Martin County schools. Several wonderful things to share with you that have taken place. First up... First up, students from the Martin Innovative Early College, as well as the Martin County Schools CTE Department, spoke to eighth grade classes at Riverside Middle School recently about the game art design pathway opportunities. That's right, in Martin County schools, we actually offer game art design as a pathway. Game art design has become a very popular career opportunity. Here you see Mr. Prittman, who teaches the actual pathway classes, along with the digital design and animation and advanced manufacturing at the Innovation Campus team. They had their students share the experiences and the content of the courses for the pathway. This will allow our students, our eighth grade students, to make informed career decisions, of course decisions, when they're coming to the high school next year. Really excited about our game art design pathway. Next up, we have a new newsletter in Martin County schools. We have been working hard to expand the arts, and we're going to have more for you about how we're doing that later on tonight. But we have had a lot of new opportunities with the arts, from elementary Christmas programs to expanding other opportunities such as theater. And so our arts coordinator, Ms. Cardwell, has developed this new Creative Connections newsletter. It is posted on our social media platforms as well as our school website. Check it out, as it highlights all the great things going on in Martin County schools, some old, some new, as well as many new upcoming opportunities. Even going to be offering a staff jazz band coming up here in the next several weeks. Really excited about all that's going on in the arts with Martin County schools. Check out Rogers Elementary School here, they had an author's tea which celebrated our fourth graders at the school who are now published authors. These kiddos actually wrote and published a book outlining some of their scariest stories at Halloween. They invited parents in, parents received a copy of the book, and now we celebrate them as published authors. The experiences they're getting now plan and transform the future that they were going to have later, so shout out to Rogers for actually allowing our students to become published authors. Here we had our annual kindergarten ginger beering at Janesville Elementary School. While this looks like kids building gingerbread houses, which in itself is pretty awesome and fun and an amazing activity for kindergartners, this actually extended learning throughout all of their curriculum content, particularly their ELA classes, where they read a book and did a lot of SEL, social emotional learning activities with the book, and then extended that to actually building their very own gingerbread house. And shout out to the central office team and all those who went out to Janesville Elementary to help each individual student build and design. The design process was also a part of this project, their own gingerbreaded house. Our AIG students actually completed an awesome unit, and then from this unit they learned about places all over the world, and they had to actually design gingerbread houses that were replicas of the places they had learned about in their units of study. And let me tell you, if you haven't seen these pictures online, you need to go check them out because they are pretty spectacular. These kids brought in the math where they had to actually do some configurations in order to design their houses to match the houses of the units of study that they had done. A lot of design was involved in this, real critical thinking, actually went and participated with these kids and watched them building these houses, so much critical thinking going in. Shout out to Colby Regans who actually facilitated this, brought in volunteers, and did a phenomenal job for our academically and intellectually gifted students. Congrats to our Martin County Schools FFA, they won second place in the Williamson Christmas Parade. They created, built, designed their own floats, and it was fabulous, if you had a chance to see that in the parade. We held our winter Special Olympics. South Creek Elementary School hosted the Special Olympics, and what a wonderful day it was. Our students had a parade, they participated in numerous activities and athletic events. We had volunteers from the community that came in and helped, as well as staff that contributed to the event. In addition, our students, so many of our students came out and were mentors and buddies for our special needs students. It was a wonderful day that was had by all. Shout out to our arts department. Our elementary students held the first ever elementary Christmas concert, and it was wonderful. If you had a chance to be there that night, we had elementary students from across the entire district come to Riverside High School auditorium. The individual music teachers worked on the same pieces, and then they came together and performed them as a Martin County Schools family. There was barely an open seat in the house, and it was a wonderful night had by all. Spectacular job to our music teachers, this is definitely something that we're going to be doing again. We also hosted our Christmas band concert, which was phenomenal. The students who've only had their instruments now, at that time, about ten weeks were actually playing multiple pieces of music at this concert. So something to be really proud of and to celebrate. Shout out to our arts department for the wonderful job that they did. I will post this online so that you can check out the videos. We also have several videos already posted online and on our social media account. Great, great job. Our FCC LA went to ECU's Hospitality Leadership and Business School Summit. The MCS chapter of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America actually attended at East Carolina an instructional presentation and campus tour of the university, and particularly their hospitality leadership program. We have multiple students taking advantage of this, particularly our students who are interested in culinary arts and the business side of food service. Such a wonderful day for our students and a great opportunity. This semester we hosted a mid-year convocation, and it was awesome. We had speaker, world renowned speaker Dr. John Hodge, who spoke to us, basically telling us to get in the way, get in the way of those obstacles that stand between our children and their success. Sometimes the one thing we need to do is get in the way of those obstacles because one person can make a difference. We had numerous prizes that we gave away to our staff, we played games, it was just a time to come together as a Martin County Schools family and really get inspired, motivated, and encouraged to make this semester an amazing second semester in Martin County schools. Thank you so much to my central office team and to everybody who had a hand in planning that day. A lot of work goes into those events, but it's worth it when your staff leaves encouraged, motivated, and inspired. We also want to welcome our new football coach. We really have hired an exceptional coach for Martin County Schools football team. His head coaching record is forty-two wins with only twenty-five losses. He's won conference championships at three out of his four schools that he has served at as head coach. He's won three Coach of the Year awards. In 2022, he led the North Carolina High School Athletic Association in passing yards, and he set the school record for total points earned. In 2023, he was, in defense, they had the top, he was in the top fifteen in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. He led them in leading in sacks, total takeaways, and interceptions. He's had forty-two student athletes that went on to play in college. He's had students play in the All-Star Games for the US Army American, the Under Armour Bowl, the Shrine Bowl, the East West All-Star Game, the Carolina Bowl, the Border Bowl, and the nine nineteen versus two, the nine one nine versus two five two. And he's had two top one hundred players. I could go on and on, but I think we get the picture that we have truly hired a coach. When we were going through the interview process, I said, I want more than a coach, I want somebody who's here to change kids' lives. And he said, that's what I'm in the business of doing. So I'm so excited to welcome Hunter James to join the Martin County Schools family as our head football coach. Our students at Janesville Elementary coded their way into the new year by holding their very own parade. We have posted this online and on our social media platforms. Janesville Elementary School, as we shared, has really grasped the STEM concept. They love coding, and so they actually coded their robots down the hallways of Janesville Elementary School as students cheered them on with their New Year's float. So if you haven't had a chance to see it, check out our school Facebook or the school's website. Great things happening at Janesville Elementary, an absolutely awesome job. And even better than that, when you watch this video, you see how excited the children were, how excited they were to root each other on and to encourage each other for the work that they had put in. Sometimes it's about more than the academics. Also this month, we celebrated several of our employees. Ms. Charlene Brickhouse, school nutrition worker from Janesville Elementary School with more than twenty-seven years in Martin County schools, we celebrate you. Also, Ms. Amy Guard, school nurse at South Creek Elementary School, has been with the district since 2006. Both of these ladies have contributed so much. We like to highlight the amazing NCS family members that we have, and these were two that we highlighted this month. Go online, go to our Facebook, and see the amazing things said about these two employees, people that truly change kids' lives every single day. We are blessed with the best in Martin County schools. As we gear up for the second semester, we've only got about a week left here. Spring classes for Martin Community College actually begin today, Monday, January 8th. Parents, remind your students, make sure to check your email students and log into your MCC account by Monday. Exams begin on January 10th with teacher-made exams, 10th and 11th, and then our EOC, and of course exams will begin on January 12th. Also, mark your calendar for our spring open house at Riverside High School. We invite all Martin County High School students, all South Creek High and Riverside High School students, to this important night on January 23rd beginning at 5:30. We're going to share more with you about this later in the meeting, but we did want to go ahead and get this out there. January 23rd, we have an open house at Riverside High School for all Martin County High School students. You're going to hear from administration, you're going to be able to sign up for clubs, you're going to be able to meet the counselors, meet all of your teachers, have one-on-one conversations with them, and learn more about the day-to-day operations. So January 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the auditorium at Riverside High School. And here we go, save the date, FAFSA night. So for all of our seniors and parents, we want you to come to this very important night where we help you get ready for college by helping you fill out your FAFSA. We're going to have people here to help you. Sometimes it can be a daunting task, some of the questions they ask are unfamiliar with, and we want to support you through this process. So please come out to the Riverside High School Media Center, January 29th from 5:00 to 7:00, and we're going to take the load off and help you complete your FAFSA. We'll have people there to answer the questions, make sure that you can get this submitted, and get the support that our children need to attend college and go to that next level. Big things happening in Martin County schools. We're still accepting applications for our early college program for rising freshmen in the 2024 year, in the twenty class of 2024 cohort, the freshman class of 2024. Applications are due by January 19th at midnight. We already have many, many applications, but we're still waiting for yours, eighth graders. If you have not applied and you are interested in getting your two-year college degree, at the same time you graduate from high school, this is your opportunity. Fill out the application by January 19th. If you need support, reach out. We are here to help you. Mr. Mazel, Ms. Cottle, Mr. Peg, Mr. Guard, whatever you need, just send us an email, come see us, whatever you need, we will help you with that application. And we are super proud to announce the launch of Martin Innovative Middle School. We had the launch planned for tomorrow night due to inclement weather, we are going to have to move that to Thursday night, but come learn more. This is for students in grades four and five to learn more about this program that will be specifically for grades six, seven, and eight. Martin Innovative Middle School will be STEAM-focused, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, and we've got big news about a big new partner that we're going to talk to you about later tonight. Amazing things are happening in Martin County schools, and great opportunities that you can't get anywhere else are happening right here. So make sure you come out to Riverside Middle School Thursday night, January 11th at 6:30 PM. Students who will be on the AIG field trip will be dropped off at Riverside Middle School. They'll arrive back at 7:30, so parents, you come on to the 6:30 meeting, and then your children will be brought to you when the field trip returns at 7:30. And last but definitely not least, we want to celebrate January is our School Board Appreciation Month. So we want to take a moment to say thank you to our Martin County Schools Board of Education for your support and dedication to our students and staff. One thing that I quickly realized when I started even looking at Martin County schools and talking with the board members was, we have an amazing Board of Education, where every single person truly wants the absolute best for every single child in Martin County schools. We are blessed with the best, and so tonight to our Board of Education, we say thank you to each and every one of you. Lots of hours goes into this, this job. This job is not for the faint of heart, it's not easy, but each and every one of you are here to make sure that our children get the best. And so tonight, we celebrate you, and we say thank you, thank you for all that you do to put in the work and the hours to make sure that our kids get the best, and each of you do have a special gift tonight at your station. So thank you, we celebrate you. Mr. Heath, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on. Our next item is the Martin Innovative Middle School. Ms. Dr. Quake, Ms. Lilly, Mr. Guard, and Ms. Russian.
Alright, thank you. Alright, good evening, board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the new Martin Innovative Middle School STEAM program. We have been working on this for quite some time. At the beginning of the year, we knew that we needed more in our middle school program. And we've been talking to parents, we've been talking to students, we've been talking to staff, we've been watching our students and what really helps them be engaged, helps them thrive, what makes our students tick, what helps them love to learn. And what we have found is that STEAM is an integral tool, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math that help our students be inspired, be encouraged, and actually want to come to school and want to learn. So tonight, we're going to share more with you about this program, and you see, we've got a whole team of people up here because a whole team of people has been working on this. We also have our teachers who are actually going to be presenting this to our parents, but because they already have to be here on Thursday night for the presentation, we've got our staff, our central office staff standing in for them tonight. But teachers will actually be presenting this to our parents on Thursday as well, highlighting the new awesome, amazing opportunities for our students. So as we mentioned, STEAM is an acronym that stands for the five education disciplines, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So what does STEAM learning look like? I want to share this video with you. Mr. Bullock, if you will click those words, this is going to highlight what STEM learning is, and then we're going to tell you about how we're being innovative and adding the A.
STEM, it's one of the most talked about topics in education. But what exactly is STEM? STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, but it's more than that. STEM has grown to represent a unique approach to teaching and learning, one that centers around individual students' learning styles and interests. This means STEM education has something to offer every student. Unlike traditional education experiences in which subject areas are concentrated on separately, STEM education emphasizes technology to integrate subjects in ways that connect disciplines and relate them to each other. So why is STEM getting so much attention? STEM moves beyond simple test performance and focuses on developing higher level thinking skills by connecting classroom learning to the real world. STEM emphasizes collaboration, communication, research, problem-solving, critical thinking, and creativity, skills that students need to be successful in today's world regardless of specific interests or career goals. STEM is a direct response to the realization that our future will be built on our capacity for innovation, invention, and creative problem solving.
So why STEM? STEM, when you look at a portrait of a graduate for the state of North Carolina, those are the embedded skills, collaboration. People don't want people for their jobs now that just work in isolation, they want people with people skills, people that can collaborate, people that can think critically, and that is something that STEM education is going to offer. Now, we also mentioned that we are going to be looking at STEAM, not just STEM. And why? Because in Martin County schools, we have a huge interest in the arts. We have a stellar band program. We actually have an awesome strings program at South Creek Elementary School. We have a theater program. We have many of our students participating in our community theater program. Martin County has one of the best community theater programs in the state of North Carolina, and we're ready to partner with them and to capitalize on those talents and offer the A. So we are going to make it, instead of only STEM, we're also going to be adding the arts into our program to make it a STEAM innovative middle school. So those arts will be music, visual art, dance, drama, band, chorus, strings, all of those things that for some students, that's the reason they wake up and they get excited to come to school every single day. So why STEAM? Greater engagement, hands-on learning, collaborative opportunities to problem solve. It connects to the real world. How many times have you heard kids say, when are we going to use this? This is real-world connection through hands-on learning in the classroom every single day. We're producing students who are job-ready. And also, what we have found through STEM and STEAM is that they have greater academic success. Between 2011 and 2021, the STEM workforce grew by 5.9 million, from 29 million to 34.9 million, representing a 20% increase. This is where the jobs are, and it's our job to prepare our students and give them those opportunities. This is where the jobs are, and it's our job to prepare our students and give them those opportunities. So, why STEAM? Because of the innovation. Activities within STEAM have disciplines that have direction and purpose. Kids aren't just told the answers, they think critically to develop their own answers. And you know what? If they fail, that's okay, because in life, sometimes we don't get it right the first time. And what we do is we learn to try again. And so if the answer's not correct, we're not there just telling them the right answer, we're there to guide them to the thought process that's gonna lead them to the right answer. Curiosity. We want kids to be curious, we want them to be engaged. When kids are curious about something, that sparks their interest. So when they're curious and they begin to ask questions, this engages them in their learning. And STEAM is all about sparking that curiosity to engage students' interests and help them be more successful. Collaboration. Again, the workforce, when you talk to businesses about what they want, and we have done that, our CTE business partnerships tell us, we need students who know how to talk to people, who know how to work in groups, who know how to work with people in order to find the answer. The saying, "Two heads better than one." So putting people's brains together and coming up with the absolute best solution is something that we'll be teaching kids to do in this program. Resilience. Again, we learned that failure is a part of the learning process. You don't get things right the first time. Everything in life doesn't come easy, but when you work at it, that's when greatness comes. And then interdisciplinary learning. So this is a big piece here. A kid, maybe who struggles with math, but is really great at the arts, can now learn the art, can now learn math through the arts. Or a kid that struggles with reading, but excels in math. Now, we're gonna be kinda blurring those lines between different subjects. And so kids that, we're all human, we have strengths and weaknesses, but we'll be able to capitalize on kids' strengths in order to grow their weaknesses. And a huge announcement. We have the East Carolina University College of Education, their also, their Office of Research and Innovation, they want to be our partners in this process. They want to work directly with Martin County Schools and Martin Innovative Middle School to work with us to help us provide resources, professional development, or whatever it may be that we need. East Carolina University is ready to partner with Martin County Schools. So we spoke with them, actually, as late as today, we've got additional meetings scheduled, but they are ready to partner, because they believe in what we are trying to do. And so this is a huge piece for us, that they wanna partner with us, that they believe in what we're trying to do, and that they're ready to step on board and come in both feet in the ground and support Martin Innovative Middle School. Yes, that is huge, so exciting. So STEAM allows kids to learn in ways that interests them. It's not telling kids to fit into our box, you have to learn this way. It's looking at the way they learn and what interests them, and designing instruction around that. We're gonna emphasize collaboration, communication, and creativity, as well as critical thinking and the research pieces of problem-solving. So again, it looks like hands-on learning. We're gonna integrate subjects versus isolate them to encourage students and capitalize on their strengths. We are gonna have student-directed learning instead of just teacher-driven lecture, and we are gonna have teamwork versus students working in isolation all the time. Now, it doesn't mean, some students do enjoy working by theirself, but the point we're making here is it's all about the individual child. And we're gonna make sure that even if they do like working by theirself, they have those teamwork skills, and then in addition to those teamwork skills, that they can thrive in an individual environment as well. All right. Martin Innovative Middle School is gonna have two instructional tiers. So one thing, we have advanced classes this year. We have implemented advanced classes at both of our middle schools, and they have gone incredibly well. So students of those advanced learners are grouped together all day with other students who are also advanced learners. So it really allows our teachers to meet them where they are, to really push them and to capitalize on their strengths. However, for the Innovative Middle School, it's not just for advanced learners, it's for all learners. So we're also gonna offer core classes. Core is that rigorous core instruction that every child needs to get. So they may not be a gifted learner, they may be a core learner who really learns better through a hands-on environment. So we're gonna offer two levels of classes in Martin Innovative Middle School, a strong core, as well as those advanced classes that we have found to be so successful. And now, what we're gonna do is get into, what does it look like? What does our program options look like at each level? We won't get as in-depth as we're gonna get with the parents on Thursday night, but we did wanna share some of those classes that we're gonna be offering. What does this actually look like? And then we will get into the structure of the program, the application process, and those next steps. Rushing.
So we've basically just kinda broke down the STEAM word into all the different parts. So for science, some of the things we are looking at, the biotechnology, the agriculture, and the STEM lab. And some of these, we have begun integrating this year, but plan to, you know, capitalize and build on these for next year. And the STEM lab, yes. And the STEM lab is an area where kids have time to work together and collaborate, and have that hands-on, and they work their way through modules of different types of careers, which we will look at when we're looking at some of the biotech stuff. But it's fire maintenance or fire management, and it's biomedical engineering with, the other day, a kid was casting a leg. So we're just getting our feet wet with some of this stuff now and testing the waters, but definitely building on this and maybe, definitely building it and adding some more modules throughout the next year.
And with the STEM lab, so when I walked by, just this past week, I saw a kid doing CPR. Yeah. On a dummy that was in the classroom, literally doing CPR. There was another student casting a leg. So they were learning how to put a cast on someone's leg. There was another student coding wires to create electricity. So these are hands-on career skills that are gonna give kids a taste of what they like and don't like, so that when they come to the high school to sign up for CTE courses, they've already had three years of hands-on experience. They're not going in the blind when they come to Martin Innovative Early College High School. They're gonna come with hands-on experience to help them choose the right classes. It also is gonna help us know what they want to make sure we have those classes, because student interest will drive the courses that we offer in our CTE department. So the STEM lab, I've showed you guys the video for our career exploration lab earlier in the year, so we weren't gonna show it again tonight, but I want you to actually be able to come see it in the school when we do some school tours, because it's amazing. If you walk in and you see kids doing these things that just blow your mind, it's awesome.
And we've got a slide later that tells of the modules we have now, and the ones that we are adding for next year, so.
So are these the kids?
The Paxton Pattersons.
Paxton Patterson, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is just done in the STEM lab, though, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And of course, with the biotechnology, as you know, the biotechnology is where you cross the natural sciences and the engineering together into a career area, since in North Carolina, it's almost a hundred billion-dollar industry now, and it's one-sixth of North Carolina's economy. So we felt like when we were hiring the staff that we hired, that they could roll those things in together. You know, biotechnology covers everything from vaccines and medicines to animal production to, you know, everything. One of my favorites is Aspartame, which is, you know, is a diamond brew, which is what we all used to keep going around here. But that's one of the things that's actually done. But it's something that complex or something that simple, just work with it, and our kids will have exposure to all those things in the Innovative Middle School before they come to high school. And of course, we talked about the agriculture, and it's a multi-branch system. And what we're trying to do is specialize with our kids at the high school level to get them ready to get certificates and develop in those career areas. So at the middle school, they'll be exposed to everything from plant parts and greenhouse work, all the way up through livestock, animal care, and then aquaculture, which is a very big industry east of I-95.
So would that be the curriculum in the core? That'll just be in the STEM lab, right?
Well, that'll be in the, we have two CTE teacher rooms that will be doing the STEM and the robotics and those type of things, and the other that will be doing the ag, the biotech, and the life sciences.
So we actually have a teacher who's gonna be teaching the biotechnology and agriculture classes. This isn't just the lab piece, these are separate classes that will be offered at the middle school level.
But it's a part of STEM.
But yes, it's all connected to STEM, yes, this is all STEM stuff. But we have, like Ms. Hoggard right now at the middle school, she specializes in agriculture, she is our agriculture teacher. So we are going to be building on what we have and enhancing it at that next level, and offering those biotechnology pieces and the things Mr. Guard was just talking about in our Martin Innovative Middle School.
So STEM is a class?
Well, we're gonna get there.
Yeah.
STEM is a mindset. We will actually offer a STEM.
I'm trying to figure out how we fit all this in the middle school.
Each of the things we've talked about so far are electives. These are elective classes.
And we'll show too, how, later on, there's a slide that is a social studies class that shows how we incorporate the whole STEM concept.
Is it at both middle schools?
No. It is open to all middle school students in Martin County. We're gonna get to that in a minute.
Okay.
But it's only gonna be housed at one middle school, because we have to have the resources to provide it. So it's open to every Martin County student, but this Martin Innovative Middle School program will be at one middle school.
So if somebody in South Creek wanted to be part of it, they would have to get permission to go to Riverside Middle?
Right, but we're open enrollment, so people in Martin County schools can go wherever they'd like to go.
Well, this is new to us, so I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
Yes, ma'am, that's all we wanna present, these are great questions, and we wanna be here to ask.
And this slide is just an example of us starting some things this year. So this was one of the assignments that, or one of the activities that Ms. Hoggard did in her Plant and Animal Science class, that they were making worm farms, and basically studying the type of soil and the interaction with the worms and,
Microorganisms.
Yes, and the soil and that kinda stuff. So they had a good time picking up worms and dirt there, so.
And some of these things that they're doing, that's when we began to realize, like, this is how kids learn. This is what they want. And so as we take these and we build on it, that's what the next level's gonna be for Martin Innovative Middle School. Okay? And the next piece is our technology piece. So in technology, we're gonna be looking at things, so when you think about STEM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, the technology components that are encompassed in a STEM environment are coding. We've also got a new opportunity with Plasma Games that we're gonna be sharing about.
Is that blood?
Um, no. We'll tell you all about it. A student tech team, you know that we have a tech team in our high school? We're also gonna have one at our middle school, robotics, and then of course, again, our STEM lab. We can't say enough about our STEM lab, because it offers everything in a hands-on format. So we'll start with coding.
So coding is basically a set of instruction that tells the computer what to do. So the students write code, and it tells the robot what device they're using, what functions to do. Coding is a big thing in society now, in the workforce. Fifty-eight percent of the job vacancies require coding skills. And in digital industry, but not just in digital industry, but in jobs in general, coding skills are necessary. And the coding skills has grown fifty percent faster than demand for overall job skills. So it's a huge need in today's workforce.
And when we talked about earlier, the New Year's Parade at Jamesville Elementary, they coded their robots to actually go through that parade. So this is, coding is something that we have to continue to capitalize on. We're starting it at the elementary schools, and now we need to capitalize on it through our middle school program.
So the coding focuses on empowered learner. So the student drives their instruction, not just the teacher, but they're in control of how they're learning, and also how to demonstrate what they learn. It also helps students understand math and science concepts. Some of those Jamesville students were coding their robots to go around the corners at Jamesville. They had to figure out what angles the robot needed to go in, and doing that with the robots and the angles, it really makes the angles make sense and come to life, so they get to see it in actual action, and not just on a piece of paper.
And they made the robots too, right?
They made the float part of the robot. The robot carried the float around, but they designed the float, yes. And it also helps with science concepts as well, laws of motion, forces, acceleration, friction, all those things help bring those concepts to life. And it also boosts critical thinking. So when they write code and it's wrong, then they gotta figure out how to fix it. So they gotta try to understand and go back and debug and learn, and problem solve and figure out what to do next. And it's also engaging. When you get to learn math with robots, it's a lot more fun, and kids are a lot more engaged and want to do it.
And this, like Amy was just saying, this was an example of coding. So this is a group of students that, and we'll talk a little bit about what they were doing later, but they were coding some robots to the music, you know, the song Dance Like an Egyptian, because they had studied here in Egypt, and so this was one of their culminating activities, and they had to code the robot in time with the music. So again, bringing in, you know, their math skills and their, the actual coding on the computers, and they had music, and so it was kinda bringing everything all together.
And then we also have the student tech teams, we're gonna be bringing down to the middle school level. They are in full force here at the IC, but we also have them as an elective at the middle school level too, where they will actually be fixing the Chromebooks. I mean, not just fixing things, but a lot of other ways, like helping out in coding, people, you know, help the teachers out when students are doing things like that. So they'll be at the middle school in this room. And they can also earn certificates, the CompTIA, the Microsoft, the Google, they'll have certificate options that they can earn at issues.
We're talking about the middle school name.
Yes. Yes. And there are some specific certifications for middle school students through our CTE courses as well.
Micro certification, micro credential.
Basically, we're offering these things in high school, and this is us getting kids ready for what we're offering in high school, and getting them prepared to make educated decisions when they get to the high school to be ready for that early college environment. And there are actual certifications that our kids can earn as early as middle school, so that when they get to high school, then they're gonna graduate even more work-ready with Level Two certifications. So they can graduate work-ready, if that's the field they choose to go into, and making a very strong living wage as an eighteen-year-old.
If we keep on, we're gonna wind up doing a four-year college degree in high school. And nobody would complain about it, it's pretty.
Don't tempt us, Ms. Cargill, don't tempt us.
And next, we have Plasma Games. And Plasma Games turns students into these scientific operatives. And so if you look on the screen, you'll see kind of a little girl there who is now learning all her science standards through this program. It's an engaging program for students, and they take their science standards and turn that into real-world experience with this technology. They have to know the standards in order to be able to complete the missions that are out there for them to complete. So it also helps them explore these high-paying STEM careers, and so that when they get to the next level at high school, we've explored all the STEM careers, and at that point, they're ready for their career path, and so we can push them to the areas that they're, that interest them based on some things that they're learning. So this is just another computer-based way for students to explore those careers.
Yep, so this is where I told you we would share the ones, so the ones on the outside are the ones we already have, with the robotics and the drones, material design, intro to health science, the biomedical engineering, the emergency fire management, environment ecology, and pneumatics. We already have all of those. The ones in the middle are the ones that we are getting, the welding, the home maintenance systems, and the cosmetology and barbering. So those are coming, and we hope to just continue to expand this as we, you know, are able to.
What's home maintenance system? That's not HVAC, is it?
Yes, ma'am, that encompasses all of it.
Plumbing.
Plumbing, HVAC, electrical, all of that, yes, ma'am. Gives them a good overall view of those.
And we still talking about middle school.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we need to get them interested in now, because if anybody's tried to call a plumber, electrician, or an HVAC person in the last couple of years, you know, it takes a little while. So the only way you can get those people is to get those kids interested and get them into the career area so they're ready to go when they get to high school and beyond.
And in the video, we didn't, again, we didn't show you, because we shared it back in October, but I'm gonna share it with you again. And one of the first things that the teacher says in this classroom is, "I wish I would've had this in middle school. If I would've had this in middle school, I wouldn't have spent my twenties trying to figure out what I wanted to do in life." And so at these areas that we're adding, we're adding them because they're things our kids are interested in. Our kids want cosmetology and barbering, so we're gonna get it. Our kids are interested in those HVAC and those home maintenance systems, so we're getting it. And they're very interested in welding. We have several kids at the high school right now that want to do welding, and we have kids at the middle school that are interested. And we have kids at the middle school that are interested, so we're adding it. Um, and we're also looking.
Right, now they have to go, they have to take it at Martin Community College, right?
So for the high school, yes, we do partner with Martin Community to actually get the welding certifications, um, as part of the two-year, uh, program. But there will be modules on welding in middle school that will prepare our kids to know, is this what I want to do? You know, you might think it sounds good, but how many middle school kids really ever get any experience in these things to say that they do or don't like this? This is gonna give them that hands-on time through these modules where they get the bookwork side of it and the hands-on piece of it to say, hey, I really like this. This is what I want to do. Or it's a possibility. It's on the list of things I want to do. Or this is not what I thought it was. This is off the list. I don't need to spend any more time invested in this, cause this is not what I want to do.
And we invite you to come see. I mean, we're just kind of dipping in right now, but come see. Um, and I think it'll make a lot more sense and to see the kids are really engaged in what they're doing. So really come out anytime.
All right, next up will be our engineering. So we had science, technology, engineering. Um, so we're gonna be talking about our K-five Building Engineers Grant. And you said, wait, Dr. White, this is middle school? Yes, but this is all about create systemic programs across Martin County schools. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about how we're integrating engineering across the content and about our specific STEM, STEAM class and our STEAM coordinator. So you heard us tell you all about the Building Engineers Grant earlier in the year. Um, we were one of only eight districts selected across the state of North Carolina to, next slide, Mr. Flip, to be a part of the K-five building engineers in the classroom. And so we are gonna be using that opportunity as an opportunity to capitalize on these skills that the children have at the middle school. So if they are gonna be getting, if our, in our elementary schools, we're gonna be offering these, um, building engineers opportunities as far as professional development for our teachers and what that will bring to the classroom. We're gonna make sure that we have those same practices in our middle school and that as children feed up, they're gonna have those same opportunities. So here are some examples Ms. Russians is gonna share with you. You mentioned like, what does this look like in a regular classroom? So, um, in our social studies class, I mentioned that we are doing this because we have seen this was the hook for our kids. And so we've seen that particularly at Jamesville with that big STEM integration. And also in, with our sixth graders, we've done a lot of STEM integration with the advanced class this year and they have just thrived.
Yeah. So the, the stuff we have shown, you know, have been two elective classes. So we've got the STEM lab and then the biotech and ag. Those are elective classes. But this is the way that a class has begun really integrating just the STEAM concept. So, um, this is actually Ms. Leggett's, um, social studies class, sixth grade. This is her advanced class. Um, but for science, they did, um, they were studying Egypt and I forgot what else they were doing. But they were talking about ancient medicine versus modern medicine. So they talked about all this stuff in the past. And then they had speakers come in, in one of the pictures up top you see, to talk about modern medicine. And so they, they told them all about stories of riding on the ambulance and just some of the things that they do. And so they got to compare some of the things that had been to what they are now. In technology, again, they did the Spheroes where they did To the Walk Like an Egyptian when they coded the Spheroes. So they had the music. Um, they did a virtual escape room, uh, where they had to escape a pyramid. They did VR goggles and went on a trip to, um, Egypt one day. For the engineering, they built things. So they had Legos. They used cardboard boxes. They used the marshmallows and toothpicks. And they built pyramids and they built the Great Wall of China and they built a coliseum. So they were building things. Uh, in with that building, then they had to do the math part. They had to find the volume of the shape. They had to find the surface area. They had to measure how tall they could get it. You know, who could do the tallest building and the shortest building? So they integrated that math. And then the arts, you can see the storyboard that they did. And then, um, the Spheroes and the music would be considered an art. So in this class, she basically has taken everything they're studying and just integrated all the different subject areas. Um, and they have a, a project coming up on, um, China they've been studying. And they are doing the, um, what's the Chinese, the? The dragon. So they're making the dragon. They'll be visiting Williamson Primary School and walking through and doing like a parade with them. And then visiting a local Chinese restaurant because we have a parent in that class that actually owns that restaurant. So they get to go and eat that day. So they're just kind of integrating everything that they're doing within this class. And so we want this to be the concept of our school so that, you know, we're all doing this.
Now, you said it's elective, so if they are in band, will they get, they have the two classes?
Well, so we do class, elective classes by semester. So band is year-long. So.
So that's.
Let's just say in the fall, they would, could have band and a CTE class, like Ms. Hoggard's, um, agriculture class. So they would do band and ag. And in the spring, they would do band and the STEM lab. So they would still get an opportunity to do both.
And we're thinking outside of the box with scheduling with this too. So as we're working with ECU and looking at the opportunities, some things we're gonna be talking about in just a minute too, would be after-school clubs. So the day will be extended in order to give kids opportunities that they want. Now, what we've described so far is in the school day, right? But there are also gonna be some after-school opportunities, um, and things like the STEM lab could also be an after-school opportunity for certain kids that needed more or were in that band and that chorus or something that was year-long course, actually isn't year-long. But something that was in year-long and they wanted more exposure opportunities. So we are really thinking outside the box with this. Um, another piece, you know, in Martin County schools, we've always had a STEM coordinator. Now, instead of a STEM coordinator, we're gonna be looking at a STEAM coordinator. And this person will be working very closely with Martin Innovative Middle School as well as with our high school, particularly our early college high school for that alignment. And that goes all the way to the elementary schools. Cause you've heard me say, we're building from that Building Engineers Grant, K-12 throughout Martin County schools. Also, we are already a member of the STEM East Partnership and the Rivers East Partnership. These are all, um, partnerships that actually foster STEM in the classroom. And so, uh, they work with businesses to actually, um, discuss the needs, the jobs, the opportunities. They want us to be a STEM school of distinction and we want to be a STEM school of distinction. And their job is to partner with us in order to help us get there.
One of they corporations?
Yeah. So tell her a little bit more about Rivers East.
Uh, Rivers East is a partnership between, uh, local businesses and corporations and all of our local, uh, community colleges. And what they do is they, uh, showcase each community college's, uh, career area, which ties up to careers, um, out in like, let's say Domtar, uh, with, uh, welding.
With where we are.
Yes, ma'am.
Like Martin County.
Yes, ma'am. Martin Community's part of it. Pitt, Beaufort, Rollin Oak, Chilwell, uh, those community colleges that are local, you know, work with it.
Okay. What's STEM East?
So STEM East is the same thing on an even bigger scale. We're looking statewide. So if there's an organization that is looking to provide internet, um, or that's looking to start their company, a manufacturing company, and they're looking for a place to come, they might partner Martin County Schools with that company, because we're gonna build their workforce. So it's not just ta, this is the local partnership, but we're also a bit, uh, a member of the state partnership, the STEM East partnership, which is all of the, the entire eastern North Carolina that comes together to form partnerships across the state. So that we can be at the table and say, hey, we wanna partner with you. Come to Martin County. We can build your workforce, which will be great for our local economy, our local government, tourism, all of that. So we are already a part of both of those partnerships. So this is just the next level. Again, both of those partnerships want us to be a STEM school of distinction because the businesses are gonna come to our area. They're not gonna choose other places. They're gonna choose Martin County. Because we have all of this to offer as, beginning in kindergarten, really.
Does the state decide who's the school of distinction?
Yes. It's an application process, um, and something that we are definitely working towards. All right. And next up is the arts. So with the arts in our innovative middle school program, um, one big add is gonna be a strings program. We are currently offering a strings program at South Creek Elementary School and Ms. Howard is ready to go. She also wants to offer this for Martin Innovative Middle School. It will still be offered at South Creek Elementary School, but it will also, right now, we do not have a theater program for this amazing strings program. So she's now there teaching violin and viola, string bass, cello, but there's not a middle school theater program. So now at Martin County schools, we will be teaching strings. We'll be offering that at Martin Innovative Middle School. So depending on student interest, this could be a class during the day or it could be an after-school club. It could go either way depending on student interest. But it will be offered, um, in one of those capacities. Again, because we're here to design programs that meet the needs of students. So we're very, very excited about that because that is something that students have said they want. We even wanna be able to offer things like guitar. We have a lot of students who want to learn, um, guitar, but we haven't been able to offer that at the school level. We'll also, of course, continue our band program. Our band numbers at the middle school are the highest they have been.
Eighth grade, we have, just to, just to show you like the progression, eighth grade being up twenty-three, seventh grade is twenty-eight and sixth grade is thirty-eight. So you can see the growth every year. So, you know, next year maybe well forty-eight. But we want to continue to grow that.
Yes, we're working hard to get our band numbers. They had dwindled during COVID and we're working really hard to make sure we get those back up. Um, we also are offering chorus this year for the first time at the middle school. We have not previously offered that. And we are offering that second semester this year and that will continue next year in our innovative program, um, and continue to expand.
We don't have that at the high school, do we?
We are. We've added it at the high school as well.
We've got thirty-seven kids who have signed up that want to take, so far, that want to take chorus in the spring.
Wonderful.
Yes. So we're really excited. And again, yes, we've add, that's a great question. We've added that at the high school as well. So now we teach elementary music, feeds into our middle school chorus, feeds into our high school chorus. The next step for us is to make sure that our children are auditioning for the all-state chorus and getting those other opportunities that we haven't been doing. So really excited about that. We are also gonna be adding theater. So theater is currently offered at our high schools, but now we're gonna offer it at our middle school. And you say, a lot of these are not new positions. They're re-looking at how we're doing what we're doing. We're thinking outside of the box. We have somebody offering theater at the high school right now. And we've got some really, um, great ideas about how we can do it at the middle school, even with current staff that already have a theater background and theater interests and who want this for our children. So we will also be adding theater. We're gonna be looking to partner with Martin Community Players. You know, they do these fantastic, wonderful productions every single year. And we want to know how we can be a part of that and help our children get ready to be a part of that, um, because that is a wonderful opportunity for them. All right. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about math. Um, it will be integrated across the curriculum. Very hands-on and critical thinking will be at the core.
Yeah. So I think math is probably the one thing that is the most integrated into every part of the STEAM concept because it's that real-life application of stuff. It's that measurement and it's that, um, financial literacy. It's, you know, even learning how to balance checkbooks and make your, um, you're gonna have a food truck and let me figure out how I'm gonna do that, what kind of money I'm gonna need. So the math really is integrated into everything that the kids are gonna do. Um, I think the, this, the next slide just shows, and we've seen some of these pictures, but right now, these are just some of the things that we've done where they have integrated the math into their projects.
Now, we're talking about the elective math, not the regular math, right?
Well, the math will not be like.
The standard course of study, that hasn't changed, right?
No, the standard cour, the, the, no. So the, the.
STEAM is a way that's teach the standard course of study.
Right. So the standard course of study will be taught, but we'll do it in this method of integrating. And so like, for instance, in the, uh, sixth grade, one of the standards is you're looking at volume and you're looking at area and you're looking at shapes. So that one of the pictures, they're making the shape right there and then they had to find all their areas. So they had to create a shape. And one group created like Beyonce, I think. And so they had to create it out of their cubes and then do their measurements. And then the group at the top, when they made their pyramid, then they had to find the surface area and the volume. So they were making it and then practicing that math skill. So math is not gonna be like an elective class. This, the end in the STEAM is just an iteration.
All of these activities are going to fit in when we can better teach the standards as it is for them to be ready to pass Math One in high school.
So these aren't extra. They're how we teach. So when you look at this pyramid, instead of saying, here's your formula to find volume or area, you say, all right, you work with them to think, I need you to build this that has an area of this. And so it's using hands-on instead of saying just a worksheet.
All power to you.
Yeah. And these are things that we've actually done this year. These are things that we are doing. This is, this is one of the things that one of our teachers, um, this is how they taught it. This is literally how they, how they taught it. And you also have.
I got a lot of hands-on too, but it was all you could do to get through the seven strings. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
But y'all know what you're doing and when you're gonna train the teacher.
Yeah. It's, and we're working on that too.
So one of the things that ECU is gonna partner with us is professional development.
Halloween.
So there, there will be a lot of training and a lot of support. Um, and remember that this is.
I mean, this stuff is wonderful. How you gonna get it all in?
It's the shift in the teaching. It's just that.
But we do have ninety-minute math classes, right?
Yes. Yep.
All right. I look forward to seeing how it goes. It will be fun.
It will. And you know, what we're doing right now isn't working.
For the students, if not the teachers.
Right. And so we need to, we need to think outside the box and do something different. Our kids thrive in hands-on learning environments. And so this is gonna be a hands-on learning environment. And remember, this is for specific students. This is not for all students. This might not be the, this is a, we're gonna get to that. This is by application. So this is for a group of students that this is the right fit. This might not be the right fit for every student. But for some students, this is the perfect.
So this is for all students, the math?
This, Martin Innovative Middle School is for stu, is, is, we're gonna get to that in a minute, but it's by application only. It's a feeder program to our early college.
Okay, just keep going.
All right. So our advanced classes. So we mentioned that there's gonna be two tiers. Let's tell you a little bit about the advanced classes.
So what we were doing before not advanced?
So, no, go ahead.
We had advanced classes this year.
Yeah.
Um, and we've added that to the curriculum and that's gonna fold into a part of Martin Innovative Middle School.
So we have advanced classes in sixth and seventh grade, um, language arts, math, science, social studies, advanced kids that travel together. In eighth grade, we also have those advanced classes, but three out of the four are high school levels. So we have world history, we have Math One and we have English One are three of our advanced classes in the high school. We are in middle school. We won't add earth and environmental. We didn't add that this year. That's in progress for next year. So those kids are actually taking three high school classes right now, those eighth graders. And so when they go, you know, next year, then they are gonna have the opportunity opens up for them to take some college classes a little bit earlier. And so it's gonna make getting that two-year degree while they finish high school a little bit easier. Um, but it is, is strictly mostly our AIG kids that are doing that because you had to agree to it. You had to understand that the rigor was gonna be there and that it was gonna be, you know, a class that you really had to be involved in. We offered last year world history, but we did it online. This year, everything has been in person. But in our world history last year that we offered to our advanced kids, every kid passed. So, and that was online. So this year, we're having it with an in-person teacher. So.
Are the kids in the advanced class gonna be able to take the STEM class?
Yes. Yes. The advanced classes will be a part of Martin Innovative Middle School. Yep.
Our, our hope is that we have enough kids, that we will have an advanced part of the Martin Innovative Middle and then the core of Martin Innovative Middle. So that we would have two, basically two groups of kids going through.
And we're, we're, we're the only school in Martin County that offers three high school courses in eighth grade that are also face-to-face. Some schools say that they're offering a high school credit.
You're talking about Riverside Middle.
Yes. And South Creek Middle.
And South Creek Middle.
Our, both of our middle schools offer three high school classes in eighth grade. And we're the only schools in Martin County that offer three high school credits in eighth grade that are also face-to-face. Some schools say they do it and they put them online. We teach the courses actually face-to-face in eighth grade. And next year, we're gonna add that fourth one with earth and environmental will be the only school in Martin County that offers four high school credits in eighth grade, which then opens up for a whole semester in the early college for them to take college classes when they, when they, um, get to that point in the early college pathway. So taking these courses, now remember, this is advanced students who are ready for this, not all students. These are those students that are ready for this and that need this. Um, this is gonna open up a huge opportunity for those students with that two-year degree, um, to get, to graduate work-ready or to have space in their schedule to do things that are time-intensive, like HVAC is a time-intensive two-year degree. Um, cosmetology is a time-intensive two-year degree. So it opens up more time in their schedule to be able to do those things. Um, in addition, we are, uh, we will be, we are the only middle schools in Martin County that offers AIG teacher. So we have an AIG program. No other middle school in Martin County offers that. Um, we have an AIG program. So for gifted students, they get pulled out, they go to special classes, they get enrichment opportunities. No other school in Martin County offers that. That will be a part of Martin Innovative Middle School as well. That will be a part of Martin Innovative Middle School as well.
Um, and then just another example of some of the activities that our, some of our advanced kids have enjoyed this year, that was the little picture, the things I was telling you about where they had to make their shapes and then do their measurements. The worms in dirt, yeah, the cubes. Um, up he, in the middle, the kids were crocheting, um, what did they call them, their worry?
Fidget.
Fidget things, and they made them for some, for some other kids, for special needs students, yeah. So they, um, we had a parent, a parent that came in that taught the kids to crochet, they absolutely loved it. Uh, we wanted them to come back and teach us how to do it. Um, the VR goggles, and then again, our pyramids are at the bottom.
So these are just hands-on activities that you will see students, um, learning in the innovative middle school. It's bringing learning to life, it's real-world application, that's what these images are showing. Again, the same thing, um, where it's talking about the pyramids, the rock, rockets, the escape room. It's things that kids are interested in, it's not listen to me, talk to you. It's let's experience this educational opportunity together and get engaged and think critically, not just listen to somebody tell you how to solve the problem, you're figuring it out yourself.
Mr. Raisin gave them the stuff for the rockets, but he didn't tell them what to do with it. Like, he didn't tell them how much to use of the water or the anything. So they had to, to test it to figure out, what can I do to make my rocket fly higher? And I just happened to go in that day and they were like, oh, we didn't, we didn't put as much water, so ours went up a little bit higher, 'cause the force was more anyway. So just them being able to do that thinking by themselves.
And again, like we talked about, Martin Innovative Middle School is a program, it's a separate program. We're still gonna have an amazing Riverside Middle School and South Creek Middle School that offers great opportunities for children every single day. But this is a different kinda program, that STEAM program is in addition to, it's a new opportunity. So if this is the right fit for your learner, then these, then you're, it, it is by application. You're gonna fill, fill out an application, and this program will feed into our early college. So for our core classes, the, um, you have to have an overall average of at least an eighty, no grade less than a seventy. We look at your EOG growth, not necessarily a score, but did you grow? Are you a motivated learner? We look at attendance, we look at discipline. Um, discipline will not, so, so discipline will be a factor in acceptance into this program. This will be, um, a protected program, just like our early college program. And then our advanced students, we have an overall average of eighty-five, no grade less than an eighty, and this is for the advanced option in those two tiers. You've got core and advanced, and once students apply, if they're accepted, then we place them in either the core class or the advanced class of the Martin Innovative Middle School program.
So how about if you're not in the core or advanced, what happens to you? You go to South Creek?
No, 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 no.
Are you gonna Riverside Middle School?
No, so Riverside Middle School, this program is separate at Riverside Middle School. So Riverside Middle School still has the regular, right? We still have Riverside Middle School and South Creek Middle School, just like we still have an early college and a regular high school. Okay, this program is separate and will run as a separate program inside Riverside Middle School, but we still have the same great core opportunities at our regular Riverside Middle School that we've always had. This is our Martin Innovative Middle School program. So this is a separate program, just like our early college program, that will run inside Riverside Middle School. So not all students are gonna apply to go to this program, 'cause this isn't gonna be the right fit for them. Some kids are not into STEAM, this isn't the program that they want to be a part of, so they won't apply. So some kids will just be a part of Riverside Middle School and get those great classes that we already offer, but to be a part of the STEAM program, you do have to apply. Um, because this is gonna be a very, uh, specific program that is gonna be focused on these areas. So if you apply, if you don't get in, if you don't meet the requirements and you don't get in, then you go to our awesome regular middle schools, Riverside Middle School or South Creek Middle School. But if you apply and you do get in, then the team, um, there'll be a team that reviews applications just like for the early college, and they will place you in either a core or an advanced.
Have we got enough teachers to do all these segments?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep, using the staff that we currently have, yes. All right, and so this is our application process. Again, I've reviewed the criteria with you, the behavior, the grades, the attendance. Then we complete an application, the application process will open on Thursday night at the parent meeting. Then there will be a team that will convene and select the students who will be a part of Martin Innovative Middle School. And if you are accepted to Martin Innovative Middle School and you maintain your grades, your attendance, and your behavior while you're a part of the program, you get an automatic bid to Martin Innovative Early College. So this program, Martin Innovative Middle School, is a feeder program to Martin Innovative Early College. You don't have to go to early college, if you go through this program and you decide early college isn't for you, that's okay. You can just decide to go to Riverside High School or to go to South Creek High School, that's your choice. But if you apply to this program and you are successful, then you get an automatic bid into the early college, which means when you get into eighth grade, then you have a spot waiting for you in the early college program. Okay, and that concludes our presentation. So that is a lot of information, but-
Anything about them?
As a school system, we really, um, need to, needed to look at, what is it that our parents want? What is it that our students want? How is it that they learn? How can we help them be more successful? How can we retain students that we're currently losing to charter and private schools? How can we retain them right here in Martin County schools? And Martin Innovative Middle School is the key to that. This program right here is better than anything anybody else is offering by leaps, bounds, and years. This program right here is, when you think, what do you want for your child? This is it. And so, you know, in a, in an area of school choice, where that school choice is here to stay, we're here to say that Martin County Schools is the school of choice. We are the best, we are offering the best, and we have more opportunity for you than you could ever want. So, um, we're really excited about this program and looking forward to, um, launching it to our parents. And again, if we don't have it, we'll be, if it's broken, we'll fix it, and this program-
So is it starting second semester?
No, no, this will start next year, fall of twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
Oh, I thought y'all were gonna be getting ready to start, were we?
Oh, no ma'am, no ma'am, that will be nice.
That's why I didn't think y'all were ready.
No, 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 this will start-
We're good, but not that good.
This will start fall of twenty-twenty-four. This is a new program for rising sixth graders, so students who are currently in fifth grade, they would fill out the application to be a part of Martin Innovative Middle School. And we invited fourth grade families too, just so they are prepared and know what their opportunities will be next year. But this is for fifth grade students in Martin County Schools to apply to be a part of this program for next year. What other questions do you have?
What's the capacity?
So we've looked at it, we would like, we're thinking around fifty, which is slits, fifty per grade level, which is similar to what we're doing at the early college, we're looking at about fifty per grade level. Um, we have a capacity that we could go a little bit higher than that um, with the teaching staff and the numbers that we have looked at and what we could do. We could go a little bit higher than that, but what we're at least planning on is a core and an advanced, which would be at about fifty students per grade level. Next year, we're gonna start with sixth and seventh grade. Um, we're gonna launch for fourth and fifth grade this year, uh, on Thursday night. Then we're gonna have a separate interest meeting for parents that are currently in sixth grade. Um, because we, the capacity is there to next year implement this program for grades six and seven.
And you gonna have letters sent home by the student to their parents?
Yes, we've actually already did that. We actually mailed letters to every child that lives in Martin County and who are, who's in grades four or five. So every child who lives in Martin County, um, whether they go to our school system or not, received a letter in the mail. So even like Hobgood Charter students received a letter if they live in Martin County about this, um, launch event, about this new program. Um, so yes, we spent on social media all over Christmas break. If you kept, you kept seeing it being posted, we, we posted regularly, I don't know how many posts we've done about this so far.
Twenty?
It probably, we, we have just been, yes, it's been, we've also sent letters home with all of our students. Um, it's been pushed out on all social media platforms, the website, in addition to our school, uh, things like Class Dojo, those individual teacher communications, it's going out through that as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, keep us posted.
We will, so this is just the start, and again, this will be for next school year, but this is the launch of the program, so we wanted you to know, um, about the amazing opportunities that are happening. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All righty, the next item on our agenda is the high school merger. Dr. White, Ms. Lilly, Mr. Guard, Ms. Mizell, and Mr. Edwards.
My boy.
All right, so the team tonight, just wanted to update you on the merger and just kinda give you some details of how everything has been thought out and planned for. We have, uh, we have had, uh, several meetings, but then an all-day meeting where every person in the district that was involved with this came together, and we've got a great plan to ensure that we have one team, one dream. Greatness begins with this, and we are excited about the next steps. So we're gonna take you through a day in the life of just what the schedule's gonna look like, um, what the day's gonna look like for the students, and, uh, Mr. Mizell's gonna share that information.
Yeah, we're back in high school now, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, board. Um, so we finally got a schedule worked out where it accommodates everybody and doesn't really affect our instruction time. And as you see, what we did is the day will start just like normal, seven forty-five to eight oh one, then eight oh one to eight oh five, we will transition to class just as we do now. Um, eight oh five is for attendance announcements, that type of thing going, uh, there. And then eight ten, we will start our instructional day to nine forty. Um, our biggest thing when we sat down, we did not want our blocks to go below ninety or stay around the ballpark of where we were. The good thing is, we had built an intervention time at the beginning, so it really doesn't affect us too much because it still keeps our blocks above the required, requirements by the state. Um, we did cut down our, our dismissal time and, um, the middle school dismissal time, we had to do some switching there. So basically, we switched for Riverside Middle's, uh, South Creek Middle as well, you'll see that in a little bit later on. We kept our lunches at twenty-five minutes, because I think that's important for social interaction, because they don't really get a chance to socially interact, uh, they don't like to stay in place at this day and time. And most of you probably know if you have children, uh, they're real big on the cell phone and communicating that way, so I thought that was important, and so did the team. So our biggest thing was, is all our blocks are either ninety minutes or higher. We have ninety-three minutes built into our third period, that's instruction time, and then twenty-five additional minutes for lunch. And then on the back end, there's actually, uh, ninety minutes. South Creek students will dismiss at two fifty because of the buses, and we didn't wanna mess up South Creek Middle's day and extend their day really long where their staff was there longer than Riverside Middle's by much, and we were able to accommodate that, I think, by five minutes. Uh, and then Riverside High School and all other students will leave at two fifty-five. So innovative campus, I'll let Mr. Collins speak on that just a second. The IC, uh, we will have a bus that takes the kids from South Creek direct, from the IC directly to South Creek, so there will be no more shoveling back and forth from here to there at the end of the day, which will increase efficiency complete, uh, uh, really, really well. Um, and then next slide is, uh, Ms. Conaway about the IC campus.
Good evening. Um, Mr. Mizell pretty much elaborated on all the, the reasons why, behind everything, but you can see, um, that the innovation campus, school schedule doesn't change that much, just that early release, earlier release at the end of the day to accommodate the buses. And by doing that, we still maintained our, um, blocks to be at eighty-seven minutes. So we only, like, lost like three minutes of instructional time for each one to still be able to accommodate that two fifty release. Um, and our, we still have twenty-five minute lunches as well, so our school day, um, did not see much impact from this. Our students are still getting their sound, solid instruction. Um, our school day starts at eight-ten, that doesn't change, we were starting at eight-ten before. The only thing that changes is that at the end of the day, all of our students will dismiss at two fifty because the buses at Riverside can't leave until our kids get there, so that's the way our day goes.
So as we actually, um, sat down and worked this out, um, there was minimal disruption to the schedules, both for, 'cause we share buses between different schools. So that was one thing we're really excited about, is the minimal disruption to all the school schedule. As we started crunching minutes and looking at this, um, it became apparent that this was gonna be even less, um, impactful to the other schools, uh, as we, we looked at the final numbers. Open house?
So, uh, yes, we will have a mid-year open house. It's not accustomed normally at a high school level. Most time you have one open house at the beginning of the year, and you pretty much meet all your teachers for the year, which is everything we've done. Um, so we will have a open house on January twenty-third from five-thirty to seven, um, in the Riverside High School auditorium. This is for everyone. This allows South Creek students to come and meet the, their, their new teachers, see their new building, um, their campus, because that's what I tried to do, is bridge the gap and make sure they understand that just because they're on our campus, they're still their school. Um, and I wanna make them understand that they are part of us, but the campus is gonna house both high schools. So that's important. The other piece was, is protecting Riverside High School students to meet the staff that's coming from South Creek, 'cause there are some staff members that will be teaching, uh, at the, you know, on the main campus as well as the IC that will, uh, incorporate that. So I wanted to, everybody's invited. We will have our clubs on display in the auditorium lobby from five-thirty to six-thirty. Um, it will be, most of the clubs are going to be student-run by club members already, and that'll give most of the South Creek kids, unfortunately, did not have an opportunity to, um, maybe participate in those clubs because they were not offered on the other end. For example, we just found out they did not have an SGA this year, so we're gonna be holding an election for them to have a president for South Creek High School and get a cabinet and representation to join our SGA, so we'll have one big SGA together, um, through, throughout the year. The other thing was, is that they'll be able to receive their schedule. A lot of changes were made, obviously, once we merged schedules, a lot of work on our end, but we're getting it done and we're ready to, uh, give those schedules out of who, what classes they will have, when. They will meet their administration, uh, and then they will also meet their teachers, obviously. The, so what'll happen in the open house, and you, you guys are welcome to attend, obviously, as well, is the flow of open house. What we're trying to do is the campus expectations there. You see, we'll just go over, basically, I'll go over an overview of how we do business at Riverside High School, uh, what our day looks like when we start, um, kinda the flow of things, the bales, what time everything goes, what the behavior looks like, the attendance, the dress code, and really nothing changes 'cause it's all Martin County already. Um, but they'll have an opportunity to do that, they'll be able to visit their teachers, rotate through their, their class. We have kids, I'll be honest with you, until I got the job at Riverside High, I'd never been in the main building. I've been in the gym, the auditorium, on the football field, that was it. So we've got kids that have never been in this building, um, or the nine-hundred building, and we wanna make sure that they are, are ready to go and feel comfortable when we start on the twenty, uh, twenty-fourth. Um, and then we also, they can sign up for clubs at night, they can get interested if they want to. They can go ahead and find out about extracurricular activities. Uh, we have theater going on, we're trying to build that, build that. We have course, right now, I think we have sixteen signed up to take course, we'd like to expand upon that. So a lot, a lot of opportunities that they would not have gotten the opportunity to participate in if they had been at South Creek's campus this, uh, semester, so we're excited about that.
All right, and again, this is the slide that shows, um, the, for the impact of South Creek Middle and Riverside Middle, because we share buses, so we have buses that go to both campuses, we have buses that go to the IC, to Riverside, and so it really is fitting all the puzzle pieces together to make this work. But as we dug in, um, it took a little digging, it took a little time, but it really only changed the day by about ten minutes at the schools, on the instructional day. Um, it doesn't change the workday as far as teachers, um, teachers were there until three-thirty anyway. So at South Creek Middle School, they'll dismiss at, um, no later than three-fifteen, and at Riverside Middle School, they'll dismiss no later than three-oh-five. Um, and you can see the differences there, it was three o'clock at South Creek prior to the merge at Riverside Middle School, it's two fifty-five. And what this does is protects instructional time at the high school and allows us to still continue the same, 'cause we talked about how we would still have the same, um, bus schedule, uh, it, for the big picture, and, uh, it had minimal impacts to the day, so we're excited that we were able to work these pieces out. And our move schedule, we have been working with Mr. Edwards and maintenance, and we have a very detailed move schedule that we've already started talking to the teachers about. Um, he'll share a little bit more with you about that.
Yes, the, uh, to move, to, uh, make all this work, I met with the, with the two principals and met and talked to the teachers in South Creek in particular. And, um, uh, I shared with them what we were trying to do, trying to new house, but we were running, and, um, we've all, we've, I spoke with all of them, and I'll be quite honest, I don't have to say this, but I will say it because it's true. The teachers there were very receptive, and they were very positive. And, uh, it's quite, it's quite a feat to try to move a teacher and just, and then move them in the middle of the year. And I, I went thinking it was gonna be, uh, a lot of negativity, it was not. So, uh, I was very ticked to hear about that, but we did come up with a schedule. But we did come up with a schedule and we presented that to the teachers to give them some kind of an idea about how we'll move them on days. And in and around, in and around testing, we may have to make some, you know, some changes with that, but I made them aware of that today. I know the principals talked with them about that too, so we've communicated that and we have a plan in place to get them moved, ROTC included, which is a big feat. But we have, we have talked with them and I think we'll be able to get that handled with people being placed and being set up. Support staff, central office is going to support maintenance by helping the teachers set up in the classrooms. We can move the stuff and then they'll need some help being set up and being prepared, so.
What days are exams? I can't remember.
The tenth and eleventh are teacher-made exams and the EOCs start on the twelfth. And so, the schedule that we built is around that. So, we're moving, for example, the twelfth, the art teacher doesn't have, you know, an EOC or, that's just an example, I'm not telling you that's actually the teacher.
So, the third week, do they go to school?
The what? The, what was the question?
The sixteenth through the nineteenth. We still want to have regular school in first semester?
Yes, that is a first semester, that's exam week, yes, for first semester.
How about the exam for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth?
So, the tenth and eleventh are teacher-made exams and then end-of-course tests begin on the twelfth and run through the nineteenth. The final day of testing is on the nineteenth, which is when makeup exams are. So, the EOCs have to be the last five days of the semester. So, that's why you see they're the twelfth, sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth. That's the North Carolina law that EOCs have to be the last five days. And the teacher-made exams are the two days prior to that. All right, and so I will share in your weekly newsletter that detailed schedule, just so you can see, we have it broken down by teacher, the day they'll be moved. That way, the teachers are prepared and they know what to expect. So, special shout-out to maintenance, they put a lot of time and energy into making sure we call teachers by name, that we communicate with them. They already have a plan for knowing what's going to move and how it's going to be marked and, and we're ready to support our teachers through this process. And the central office will be there when they get there with the stuff to help them unbox the stuff, put out the stuff, get everything set up for a successful first day on the twenty-fourth. A really open house on the twenty-third. So, alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much. If you think back to the beginning of the year at convocation, that was one of the quotes that opened the beginning of year convocation. And it's never been more true than today. You heard Mr. Edwards' comment, the teachers are very positive about this, they're excited about this and they're ready to make it happen for the children because their voice was at the table when we made this decision. And I truly believe that the best is yet to come for Martin County schools. We are going to ensure that our children get the best and that's what this is all about. We'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Mr. Edwards is handling the move, right?
Yes, but as far as the physical moving of the teachers, the maintenance department will move everything.
Do y'all need any more advice here?
I, I think honestly, between the school teachers and the central office staff, moving is not, is not the problem. Getting them, getting them set up and prepared for the open house and being ready to receive students, that was my biggest concern and with that extra help, I think we'll be okay. But I, thank you for that, very nice.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Perkins, will you take care of the closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education in a closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A one and A six to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute one fifteen C dash three nineteen and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three point three eighteen point eleven A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U.S.C. one-two-three-two G and North Carolina Statute one fifteen C dash four-zero-two. The board also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Sir.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Closed session, granted.
Have a motion and a second to approve personnel as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Thank you. I need a motion on the closed session minutes.
I move we approve them but keep them closed.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the closed session minutes but keep them closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Righty. Uh-oh. Public comments.
Mr. Chair, we'll read the standards for public comments. Number one, individuals will be given three minutes to make their presentation. Request to speak for a group will be granted five minutes to address the board. Number two, individual or groups will be called on to speak in the order on the sign up sheet. Number three, if an individual is not present or declines to speak, the next person on the sign up sheet will be called upon. Number four, if the twenty minute period ends during a speaker's presentation, the public comment period will end at the conclusion of the time period allotted to the presenter. Number five, any materials that the individual or group wishes to present to the board should be submitted prior to the meeting so they can be distributed. Number six, the board will not respond to comments except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Number seven, the superintendent will provide a written response for questions posed to the board within ten working days of the meeting. And number eight, the board will not hear public comments relating to personnel issues or student issues that are under investigation by the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Burges. Uh, Ms. Brooks?
Right here.
Yes ma'am, your turn.
Please let me know when my three minutes begin.
It starts whenever you start.
Thank you. Good evening to all. I sat here tonight and I am just in awe. What you've done tonight, what you heard, I heard twenty-five years ago when we went to Weldon, Miss Coggin. Everything that has been said and done, it can be accomplished, but you have to make sure you have the right personnel diversity. Make sure parents are involved and make sure it's for all students. Now, tonight I come to you and I know I'm not going to complete my three minutes, so I'll just continue month and month. I am a native, as you know, of Martin County, from the Martin Olmos Halifax. Tonight, as I drove here, I encountered deer, darkness, uh, speeders, eighteen wheelers. And I thought about the students from the Swift Creek, Roanoke, I call area. Getting on the bus in the morning in the dark, going home in the dark, going to all these extracurricular activities in the dark, not having gas, you know, parents. And then I thought about something else I encountered in Oak City. The housing market, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for two bedroom homes in Oak City. I said, what is going on? Must be a gold mine. It's true, I have facts right here, I even checked on some. Another thing, no school, no bank, no restaurant. But this is Oak City on the northern end, another thing. When it snows, and I worked at Easton for twenty-three years, oh my, you are not able to leave early because the snow always stops north, right, Ms. Coggin? Think about the buses, the children. And the last ten or two minutes, disrupted thinkers, Bishop T.D. Jakes wrote a book and you should read it, disrupted thinkers. People who think outside of the box are not liked. I heard a lot of outside of the box thinking tonight. It's wonderful, but you know, some people don't particularly care for people who think outside the box, like Regina Brooks, like my son and my husband. Leaving Weldon at sixteen, going to Morehouse Duke University of Chicago. People don't like that, they say they do, but do you really like it? Are you for all children? Are you doing everything you can do for all children? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And now?
Um, yes, we have South Creek High School mid-year graduation, which will be Friday, February fifteenth, five P.M. We have our board work session, Monday, January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. We have our RHS Riverside High School mid-year graduation, Thursday, January twenty-fifth, beginning at six P.M. Our February board meeting will be February fifth, and our February work session is going to- Our February board meeting will be February fifth, and our February work session is scheduled for Monday, February nineteenth.
Does anybody have anything else? Entertained motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Needing adjourned.